Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight, Thursday, January 16th, 2020. I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. This next section of our meeting is public comment. This section is reserved for people who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to address the Board regarding agenda items should request clarification from the Chair as to whether or not to speak now or during the meeting when that agenda item comes up. We ask that you please give us your name and address. Anyone wishing to address?
Chairman, would I would like to address Agenda Item 5, Appointments and Resignations. Would you like me to speak now or before the item comes before your Board?
Why don't you wait because it'll only be a couple of minutes, it'll only be a minute.
Okay, can I speak about Item Number 4?
Sure.
Okay, Catherine Marks, 81, Sentinel Woods. I would like to say that I think it's just absolutely wonderful that you are honoring both Brian O'Connell and John Sodderberg, two people who have given tremendous amount of time, energy, passion, experience, and dedication to our town, and we are fortunate to have had both of them both serve on our town and work for our town.
And thank you very much. And I agree.
Absolutely.
Two very strong, powerful figures that will be missed. Thank you. Good to Know.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, I passed out the proclamation that's under Good to Know. Unfortunately, Brian O'Connell couldn't make it tonight, either could Claire O'Brien, so we're going to move that to the next agenda, and because of that, also John Sodderberg. So we'll be recognizing those three people on the sixth.
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you. Our next item is Appointments and Resignations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I just make a comment before I forget it? So this week, you know, we have this, I had a proposal to take the Hebron Elementary School pipes and do a study relating their failure to concentrations in the pipes that we've seen. Anyways, I've made some progress on it, it's actually pretty exciting. As it turns out now, EPA Research in Cincinnati, the Acting Section Chief and some of the researchers extremely interested in getting involved in determining, in doing a study about it. In addition, UCOM Professor at the Department of Engineering is going to participate, and Connecticut DEP is also, Department of Public Health is also interested. But in the next couple of months, we'll be looking for funding, and the exciting thing about it is that Hebron's, Hebron's, Hebron Elementary actually is a unique kind of laboratory in the sense that the pipes went through treatment and failed, and a lot of schools out there now are going to be facing remediation or treatment. And we have the opportunity to use, you know, what for us has been expensive, but use that the, what has been, the pipes that we have to actually come up with better remedies across the country. So in the next six months, again, we're going to get together a research group, look for funding, and I think they're going to come here and visit, so it's great.
Okay. We look forward to continued updates. Thank you.
Dan, we were going to supplement this proclamation in the Good to Know, seeing the other.
Ah, okay.
If you would be so kind.
Okay. Stepping back, we do have a Certificate of Appreciation, and this is recognizing Scott Porter for his many years of dedicated service to the Hebron Volunteer Fire Department and the Hebron Lions Club, and congratulating him on receiving the Hebron Lions Humanitarian of the Year Award. So we want to again thank Scott Porter for all he has done. On a personal note, I remember when Scott Porter first got into the fire department, and he would actually ride his bike from where he was living here on Marjorie Circle to the firehouse with his gear under his arm. And he has gone from being one of our volunteer firefighters, which he still is today, to being one of Manchester's firefighters and paramedic. And then the years of service that he has helped the Lions Club with their projects, it's no wonder that he get this kind of an award. So I congratulate Scott.
Well deserved.
So I guess what they're proposing to do is there's a gala event at the St. Clement's Castle Saturday night from the Lions 23C District.
Oh.
They're holding a meeting, and he's going to be recognized there, so, and there he'll be given, I don't know if it's the, what's the humanitarian of the year, but I think they give him, even the Melvin Jones Award is another specific award in Alliance that he's supposedly going to get presented to him for his participation, so just wanted to let that be known.
Beautiful. Congratulations, Scott. Well deserved. Okay, so I believe we only have the one appointment?
5A, Appointments and Resignations. This one would be for the Board of Finance appointment. Attaches a letter from Michael McCormick, a registered R, expressing his interest in being appointed to the Board of Finance to fill the vacancy created by Peter Casper's election to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and again, Catherine Marks, I believe you wanted to speak.
Yes, Catherine Marks, 81, Sentinel Woods, Hebron, Connecticut, and I am the chairperson of the Republican Town Committee. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not having written a formal letter, but Michael McCormick was indeed endorsed propartly unanimously by the entire Republican Town Committee. We are very happy that Peter was elected to the Board of Selectmen, and we're very thankful for all of you who are willing to serve. We know that as we look at people like Scott, Brian, John, and Claire, people who have served our town so well, I believe Mike McCormick fits into that footprint so, so wonderfully. And again, I believe we are just so blessed in this town to have people to come up and volunteer. Mike would make an excellent replacement for Peter's seat in the fact that he would, I believe, carry forward what the voters voted for with Peter two years ago. Mike is a very pragmatic man, willing to make decisions based on, knowledge-based decisions based on the information that has come in, similar to the way Peter does. When Mike McCormick came to the Hebron Board of, Hebron Republican Town Committee in 2005 to begin service, it was after a very long tenure of service to the town in other ways. As many of us do, we serve both our religious affiliations and the town when our children are young in school programs, and that's what Mike has done. He has served both his community and his state, and now he would like to serve on the Board of Finance to fill the vacancy of Peter Casper. Again, he was received unanimously by the Hebron Board, Hebron Republican Town Committee, and I'm here to endorse him not only as the chairman of that committee, but also as someone who has known Mike for two decades. And it is just a pleasure to have people of that, of Mike's caliber, both in their passion for public service, their passion for our community, to serve as volunteers on our representation of government.
Great, thank you.
In reading his letter, he seems eminently qualified.
Yes, yes, he is, and I think he will be a great addition.
And if I may, I've known Mike for 20 years as well, and obviously the letter states very eloquently, and obviously works for Catherine as well in terms of his, his character and his capability, and I can't underestimate how, how I would recommend him. I can't think of a better person to serve on the, in the capacity of whatever he chooses to serve, I think he would serve with distinction and would represent us all very well. So I wholeheartedly provide Michael personal endorsement and any other endorsement I can provide in terms of support, this recommendation, knowing the job and what it takes, and knowing him personally, I think he'd be a phenomenal fit. So I wholeheartedly endorse him and encourage you to think about that as well.
Thanks. Okay, yeah. Again, I, I know Mike, and he's a great addition, it's really impressive that we're getting people of this quality to serve on the boards, and so, that's fantastic.
Okay, I'll move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint Michael McCormick to the Hebron Board of Finance for a term to run until November 16th, 2021. All in favor, is anyone saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so be it. Thank you. Next.
Next up, Item 6A is Review of the Town of Hebron's Committees and Commissions. This one would be the Public Building Committee. The Selectmen have designated the Public Building Committee for review. Attaches information regarding the Public Building Committee's establishment, composition, and meeting schedule information. Also attached is the current charge as approved by the Board of Selectmen November 3rd, 2016.
Okay, I just want to do a quick, I was one of the ones that was involved with getting this committee, commission established, and one of the reasons was that I saw where we were doing building projects, but the building department, the building inspector did not have really time to oversee these things. Many times, the head of the department that the building was being done for would be placed in that type of a role, and many times, they really had no building experience. So I thought it only made sense that there'd be a committee, there's some sort of a group to kind of assist with the oversight rather than falling, another thing falling onto the backs of already overworked town personnel. I think in many aspects, it has worked well. I think that they, they have done a great job on the many projects that they've gotten involved in. So I just wanted to state that as an opening comment. In reviewing this, and I know, Gail, you had a couple of comments or thoughts.
I did. Like you, I believe that it is an essential committee, because if we haven't any buildings or renovations, you've got to have people who know what they're doing. But when I read through all the documentation for this committee, I realized that we have this committee meeting every month, but they don't have a building every month. So why are they meeting when there is no reason to meet? There's projects that they undertake, then the town manager would call them in, but if there's not, then why are we bothering busy people to come out?
That makes sense.
Yeah, I know what it's like to go to meetings all the time, right? So why, yeah, but right now, for example, of course, they have to be out for the Hebron Elementary School water remediation, but when that's completed, unless there's another project, I don't see it.
Do you agree with that?
I was going to say, I was going to ask Andy, as a town manager, to also chime in on this too, because you see what goes on day to day, and you probably work the closest with the building committee on a far more routine nature than any of us.
Yeah, I mean, originally, when it was established, we were, approximately 10 years ago, we were starting to look at sites and possibly build a new public works facility. So a building committee was established. They went and they visited different sites in different towns where they had just recently constructed public works facilities, and they were quite active with that charge. That project never really took off, and it kind of got stale, so at the time, the administration started giving them other tasks, to look at the facilities report on all the town buildings, look at some of the CIP projects, and then also, we had some school roofs and some other construction going on that we kind of gave them because they were kind of in limbo. I think, Gail just said it now, I think a perfect example of having a building committee is, right now, they're doing tremendous amount of work on that pipe replacement at the school, so I think they're valuable when it comes to a project like that. I would be open and agreeable to, I'm not sure they need to be in any and all projects, depending on size or dollar amounts, but clearly something like the, you know, the pipe replacement project is definitely worthy of a billing committee. We recently just went through the HVAC replacement the other night for the library.
Yeah.
They were pretty instrumental in making sure that that was going to get done properly, so I think their worth was established in that project as well. But I think we don't really have anything on the horizon this year in CIP that would need their expertise. So if you're asking my opinion, my opinion would be, as someone just stated, I think as each project comes up, it should be looked at and determined whether you need the building committee to weigh in on that or not. So that, that's my two cents.
Chairman?
Yes?
Is there a committee, one that makes recommendations, or do they have authority over something?
They pretty much make recommendations.
I mean, they get, they go through plan review, you know, if a project is anticipated and, you know, they would potentially help work with potential designs, you know, working with the architects. Basically, they, they would lead their expertise in whatever area is necessary, and John may be able to speak actually better because he actually worked with them on the water remediation work.
But to answer Mark, I would say, and one of the things that I read here, it said that they would secure cost estimates, but that's not so. Not that, and there was...
That is in there, but they pretty much do that in conjunction with the town managers.
I found that there were a few things that I marked in here that I was wondering why they were in here. So in other ways, these two pages, I like to see them sploosed up.
So my, my experience with them, with a building committee is, you know, they have an incredible amount of expertise, and so they're, they're, some of those, the people on there are, the people on there, period, are just very good, excellent. And they not only do cost estimates, they're managing this project now. They're, they're signing, you know, invoices and all that, they're paying people, and so, and it's been a lot of work, and so, you know, the town has saved probably, I mean, they could have saved $100,000 amount of work that they put into it, maybe more. And then they did a good job. I mean, I think we came in at 885,000, that, that was below what I think we thought we were going to get, we got all copper, so all good. My, my, you know, as we're going through this, my experience for the last two years is, I think for committees to be more effective, they need more participation of a selectman, and not just a liaison, because the liaison isn't on the committee, so the liaison really doesn't have a right to speak, not a member. And so, you know, I'm on the land acquisition committee now, and that's, I'm a member, and that's useful, and they can see it's a use, it's useful because, you know, I will communicate to the Board of Selectmen what was said and advocate, possibly if I agree. So on the building committee, I think there needs to be a selectman on it, that's what I think. And I think Andy needs to have a little bit more direction on there. It says within what they're supposed to be doing that you tell them what to do. That's not always obvious.
Well, I pretty much do with Mel, I do it in the mornings prior to the meetings, I'm not sure if that's known or not, but he's in touch with me before and after most of the meetings, what's going on, especially with the architects and engineers.
So I would say, you know, that, like I said, the expertise is invaluable, I think, like, for example, the schools ought to make use of this committee. The schools actually should use, make use of this committee. I would encourage them to. We should share commute, these types of committees, you know. The expertise is great, but like I said, I think in terms of some of the more important committees, a selectman should be on the committee and, and more involved. That's, that's my opinion.
Well, Andy, if I could go back to, there seemed to be some question about whether or not, when they intersect, or when there's, when there's a need for the committee. And so I just want to make sure I understand, if I'm reading the duties correctly, that it looks like it's triggered, if I'm reading this right, based on the, approved by the selectmen, based on the statement of need, projects at the Board of Selectmen's discretion. So are we really in a role where we're supposed to be more active in determining when there's services or need, or am I, is that really at, then your discretion? I just want to make sure I understand the role of the selectman right now, the ways defined.
How it works now is because I'm the day-to-day guy, I'm the guy that does most of the projects, whether we, like, when we did the HVAC here, we had them involved in those, those types of projects, when we redid all the boilers and furnaces for the gas project, they were involved in those types of projects. That was pretty much, I work for you guys, the Board of Selectmen, so I kind of just relay that and work with them on the projects like I just stated. But there's some times where they're kind of in limbo, and like Gail said, they're meeting monthly, whether they, they need to or not, I'm not sure. You know, that's up to however you guys want to see it, but I, I think right now, a perfect example, as we've already alluded to two or three times, is the water pipe replacement where they're invaluable.
Yeah, it seems like it's a terrific committee, it's just, I'm hearing that maybe there's an opportunity for us to be more clear, whether it's in how we intersect, whether it's as a board or as an individual, or how we can help make it more clear as to when they need to meet, and should we be thinking about what are the parameters, like, when do you pull them in? Is it time and scope, is it, and when don't you pull them in? I mean, is there any, how do you evaluate that?
They're pretty much any and all at this point.
Okay. And would you suggest that we think of, no, clearly they're valuable.
They're very valuable for the library, they ask questions about the HVAC system, so even this non-technical person could understand them.
So do, do we need to come up with more parameters, or do you think it's, it's working fine the way it is? I just, again, trying to understand.
Well, like I, like I said, I just can only refer to in the now.
Yeah, yeah.
And like I said, with the water project, they're quite busy, so right now, it seems fine.
Okay.
I know there was a time when they were in limbo, and then they kind of looked for things to do because they're assembled, so maybe that's the area where we could tweak it. You know, most of the buildings have been upgraded with heating and air conditioning because we just did, you know, before, first it was a Siemens project, and then now recently the gas project, so we're all in pretty good shape. I mean, we do have some roof projects possibly coming up in the near future on the schools and stuff like that, where I think they would be valuable once again, and things like that.
I just wonder if the Board, I just, I'm just wondering if the Board, would it help if we, and you may already communicate this, if we know what projects are coming forward and then have a discussion, yes, we need them in these six or seven, over the next 12 to 18 months, all of a sudden now they have a sort of an expectation of what's on the horizon, and then maybe they can adjust their schedule accordingly. And I just didn't know if we could work on that duties and provide a little more structure in listening to commentary about sometimes they're meeting for no reason, or...
We kind of just, we just, I just said that with them, well, like I said, we met with the library board and the, the company that's proposing the improvements, but prior to that, they also reached out and wanted to know what we had on the horizon for the CIP projects, and there's nothing that would trigger them. We're going to demo some portable classrooms hopefully next year, and then we have some repaving of parking lots, but it really doesn't involve them. So there's no real big projects that we know of, but like, that water replacement, that just came out of, you know, no offense, that kind of just came out of the blue, so it was lucky that we had a committee like that established that could just jump right in.
So I, and this is not a major criticism, I would just say, you know, these, some of these boards, appointed boards, kind of take a life of their own.
Yeah.
That's, that's what happens. And I would say, in some instances, they need more direction from the town manager, or if we had somebody on there, you know, that, that, that would be helpful, because, you know, as a liaison, you, like I said, you have, you're suggesting things, but then the finished product comes to the Board of Selectmen and, you know, may or may not be what you wanted.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I'll repeat myself and say, these two pages that I have here, I really would like to see them sploosed up to what is going on now.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of verbiage there, for sure.
Well, some of the things, and I've got it underlined all over, some of the things are really not happening.
Right, right.
The way it's being done.
Right.
We should make this and the reality.
Right.
More in line and more in sync.
So are you saying like, that the town, it says in there that the town manager is directing this committee, and it, maybe there should be more direction, or?
Even the duties, it's triggered first at the Board of Selectmen level, right?
Right.
Depending on the Board of Selectmen's.
Right.
So maybe we should have a better working knowledge of what's going forward, then we can talk about, hey, maybe we should intersect more because this is a bigger deal. I, you know, to your point, maybe this is the way for us to, because right now, I don't know what any of the projects are, so...
Well, one of the things that got me was it says secure cost estimates, that's not what's done, they go through Andy.
Gail, I understood you were saying that we've given them some duties in there, or responsibilities that they really shouldn't have.
And here it says so, but they don't have them enough.
Right, so that we should exclude them from their charge.
There's lots of little things that were written up at the time, and whatever it was, oh, 2016.
Although, there may be times when you want them to, you know, procure, procure some estimates.
But then leave that to Andy to decide what he's going to charge them with as their mission.
Well, this is, this is what, this is where, yeah, this is what we're trying to do, is try to, A, see just what these different committees' charges are, and to quote-unquote "clean them up," if you will, either get them more in line with what their actual functions have turned into, or, you know, whatever, whatever the realities are.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and they have done fantastic, you know, fantastic on a lot of the things they've been involved with, I think, everything. It's an amazing pool of knowledge from so many different construction fields, that, as I say, you know, being in construction, I would see things getting done, and I would get calls from people saying, I'm not sure what, you know, what they're doing. And you kind of walk in the doors, I'm not sure either.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, it'd be like me telling, you, how, you know, how, how do I word this?
Oh, you're going to do a police analogy or a wood analogy?
That's what I'm trying to go with. You know, we had people that had no idea what end of a hammer to hold.
Okay, gotcha.
And, you know, they were being flim-flamed by, oh, this is the way we always do it. It is like, no, no, that is not accurate.
That is why we want the...
And that is why we needed the building committee, so that there was somewhere there that could say, whoa, wait a minute, no, 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 no.
Right.
You know, one of the things even at the new Fire 2 station, you know, they talked the department into going with this elaborate water float system in a water holding tank, which a simple one or three float system would have more than adequately taken care of at probably an 80 or 90% cost savings, and it would have worked, which the system they have now has never worked from day one. You know, it would just, there would have been some of the building committees saying, no, you don't need this, but this is something the architect or the engineer sold to then current chief, that, oh, this is the greatest thing in the world, and blah, blah, blah. Never worked. It still hasn't.
So are they an oversight committee in a way? John, sort of?
Well, I mean, let me give you an example, to me, an example of the success, the water committee, they did get cost estimates... they did get cost estimates, went through the entire process, negotiated with the state, they got the reimbursement, so $600,000. So, I mean, a lot of credit there. And, you know, there's a lot of expertise. One of the guys, Dave, was, had his own architecture firm. And what I'm, you know, is an engineer who's fabulous. And, you know, I won't go onto everybody else, but I always, when I, I don't know anything about engineering, so I always, you know, look to one of them, and I don't know anything about, you know, architecture, so I look to the other. So, that's a success. Where, you know, where maybe it wasn't a success was, I think, to some extent, the library, because they had higher expectations of what should be done. And, you know, Clara had, who was a board member, had experience with these smaller types of projects. And, you know, there was a question as to whether to do a $30,000 study. And she's like, no, right? And we voted not to do that.
Did the design, build?
Right. Did the design, build, and set. I don't think they were happy with that. So their expertise, and I think that what we did was correct. It came out well. And, you know, Andy found the right contractors eventually. They were frustrated by that, which is unfortunate, but, you know, that's the way it goes, right? Then they have to, that's the kind of direction we need, basically. Their expertise is fabulous, it should be applied to the projects that they can apply it to. Sometimes, however, this Board of Selectmen's going to overrule what they want.
Well, and that's something that, you know, any board or commission, if it is an area that we have the final oversight on, there are going to be times that, you know, for whatever reason, we are not going to take their recommendations. And this is, you know, this is part of our responsibility.
Right.
Is to look at all of the facts. You know, things change. You know, last year, even with CIP, things changed from the time that they had met, you know, the time that we actually were getting into the budget negotiations. Things change. You know, everything is fluid. We find that even with our insurance estimates.
Right.
You know, what we're told in the beginning of the season, as we first initiate our budget deliberations with insurance costs, is usually a total, totally different amount of money than when we get up to the actual final decision, when we bring it to the voters. You know, so we have to, we have to be cognizant of that fact. You know, but with this here, I think there are a few tweaks that we should probably try to adjust and move forward.
Just on these two pages, because that's the current one, and I think we need to, the reality and what the paper says, ought to be the same thing.
Okay. Great, okay.
Do you want to, everybody take those first two pages, try to, for homework, kind of mark them up a little bit? Well, we got to have homework. Everybody else has homework. All the kids have homework.
I think we should let Gail do it, and then we'll just look at what she does.
Thanks, Mark.
I think we have plenty of homework here, but.
And then we'll try to maybe settle this with the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so I can tap it over and bring it back to you.
I'll work with you, like Gail.
And that pencil must have gone to play. I love pencils.
As long as you don't quit SP. I hated that SP.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next thing is the poet laureate. Adopt the poet laureate ordinance. So, earlier today, I'm sorry, earlier this evening, a public hearing was conducted to receive comments on the proposed poet laureate ordinance, which is attached. The ordinance will become effective on Friday, February 14th, 2020, unless the selectmen designate a later date. Gail?
I'd be very happy to read this for the poet laureate. Being on the Library Board of Trustees, I've been working with Mary Ann and Althea on it, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the library, to have that program authored. It will also help out the schools, so it'll be interesting to many, many people in town. So, the proposed resolution, be resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen, that in accordance with Section 404 of the Hebron Town Charter, the Hebron Poet Laureate Ordinance be adopted, and the Hebron Poet Laureate position be established.
Okay, everyone's heard the resolution. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, sitting by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So be it. Next, we had the amendment for the bazaars and raffles.
Sure. And let's put this to bed. Being resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen, that in accordance with Section 404 of the Hebron Town Charter, the amendment to the Town Code, Chapter 158, Bazaars and Raffles, Section 158-3, permit fees be approved as follows. Permit Class 1, $50. Class 2, $20. Class 3, $20 per day, what are we doing here? $10 per, $10 today. Class 4, $5. Class 5, $80. Class 6, $100. Class 7, $100.
Okay, hearing the proposed resolution. Any further comments? Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So be it.
Next is the sewers and WPCA review.
Should I take it, or? Okay. So, this is my little thing, and hopefully other people will get interested, or will be interested, because a lot of information. So, we passed a bond last fall for $7.6 million to enhance our sewers. Our sewers are a huge asset in town. And, basically, I wanted to go over it as a board to just look at some of the questions that are out there. And like I said in my email, I really don't have an agenda. What I do want to do is understand the legality and the finances. So as we go forward, the sewers are managed correctly, and we don't come to a point where we were basically scrambling to get the money in to fix the sewers that are, I won't say broken, but they are not in good shape. So, so that's what, today. I don't want to get too far into it, because next meeting we'll be having Kevin, no. Kevin, yeah. Kevin will be coming, and Clara will be coming, I think, some of the WPCA board. So I've been trying to gather some information that's useful. And I went to the WPCA meeting, and I'll probably, which was very interesting. I'll be probably going there now, because I'm interested. So, I just want to go through the information, and, let me just read from what I said. So in general, what I want to address is the relationship between users, those paying the users' fees, and the owners, which is all of Hebron taxpayers. So, about one-fourth or one-fifth, there's about 1,000 users, right?
Yeah, it's just under the contract.
So it's about 2,000 people. So it's about a fourth or fifth of Hebron's on sewers, the rest are on septic. But the bond is for the owners. So, what I'm really interested is, is in two, let's see. I want to determine the relationship between users and owners, and to ensure that all are treated fairly, and that the financial expectations and rationale are given to everyone's satisfaction. Two, that the procedures and policies are put in place to ensure that we don't come to a point again in the future where we have to have basically an emergency bond. And then also look at possible efficiencies to the management of the sewers. So, these are some of the questions I have, and I know people out there have some of the answers, although I think some of these are just opinions. And some people have very strong opinions about this, and I don't. So, I'm trying to get data right now. So, one of the first things is, that perhaps we'll be talking about next week, is the legal relationship between the Board of Selectmen and the WPCA. This is not a straight relationship. It's, it is a relationship, if you look at different towns, this is always a little bit controversial, and because there are users, and then there are owners, and somebody's got to pay for this thing, and it's got to be fair. So how do other towns manage their sewers? Historical overview of the construction of the Hebron sewers. How are users' fees determined? I just figured that out yesterday. Should there be a review or consultation with an elected board, that is, the Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen, in the determination of users' fees? So, users' fees are like a tax, and it's, I mean, taxes are generally approved by elected bodies. However, in other towns, many towns, the WPCA does determine the users' fees. However, in those towns, the users' fees pay for the entire system, both the construction and the enhancement. So, that's a question. All right, so then, historically, when did the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance take from the users' fees and apply it to mill rate reduction? So, one of the reasons why I supported this bond was, I didn't think it was fair, you know, years ago, that the users' fees were used for the general population, general reduction of mill rate. And in other towns, we'll see that there's a lockbox, to quote Al Gore, on those users' fees, that direct them to use it for a specific thing, or operations and maintenance, and enhancement of the sewer system. And often, it's in a percentage, you know, it should go to operations and maintenance, and a certain percentage of the enhancement of the sewers. And that is, so that people's users' fees are reasonable, but also that it's fair to the owners. How did taking of users' fees for mill rate relief affect sewer operations and maintenance? Was the deterioration rate unusual, and how can we manage them more effectively, if possible? Our sewers are 28 years old. Sewers generally last, I think, 30 to 40 years. So I don't know, I don't know about that, obviously. Should there be an ordinance to restrict the use of users' fees to sewer-related construction and O and M? Should there be an ordinance that describes the minimal amount of users' fees that should cover new construction and operations and maintenance? And should there be an annual report and financial statement from the WPCA? So, one of the things that I found was, in gathering information, is that it was difficult to find information, especially if you're a layperson and not an accountant. Other towns do have annual reports. You know, for me, one of the important things is that there's transparency in government, and I've said this many times, a taxpayer should be able to walk into town hall and know how their taxes are being spent. And so, this is a huge expense, and a taxpayer, to me, a taxpayer should be able to come in, there should be a notebook, or it should be online, and they should say, okay, this is how it was done. And whether they like it or not, whether I like it or not, it should be transparent. All right, so, these are some of the documents we can go through. And like I said, I don't know what kind of discussion we want to have right now. I know, I said 15 minutes. But I want to go through them, and just so you identify them as interesting. Okay, the first one is the Water Pollution Control Authority Administrator, Kevin Kelly. This is roles and responsibilities. He's a part-time administrator. This is unusual. I think, what does he get paid? $3,000 a year, right?
Yeah.
For that, so.
What time does it entail?
Well, I don't think he's spending, I think he's spending $3,000 worth. I don't, I don't know, but we'll.
We should know how much time it requires to reciprocate properly for what he deserves.
Right. So, Kevin will be here next week, and that's a great question. Okay, so that's the first thing. So that's operations. And a lot of, some of this is random, because I don't, I don't, I didn't know what I was, exactly what I was looking for. It's kind of a fishing expedition. The next one is the administrative order for us to actually build the sewers. So this is 1978. It was actually in relation to pollution that was leaching into various water bodies. Basically, there are three areas that we're talking about. We're talking about Amson Lake, we're talking about Hope Valley. Those are the two residential areas, and then we're talking about the commercial area. So there's three different areas. All right, that's pretty long. It's worth reading, at least skimming. The next is the Clean Water Act summary that came with it. Okay, the next is the sewer and water from a Hebron code. That's useful information. Now, Donnie, you had said that there was a, I did see something in here that showed the relationship that we have between, or the, between the Board of Selectmen and the WPCA, but it's not really clear in our ordinance, I don't think. It's not really clearly written. It's not spelled out.
I thought I got it out.
Okay.
I got it out there.
Oh, you did?
That was this one here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Quickly on that, the ordinance was mostly derived around the order.
Okay.
The original order. I don't think there's anything, or he was done with it since then.
That's it?
Yeah.
This. Okay, but it doesn't really spell out the roles and the responsibilities. Does it spell out who's determining user fees, or does that come from the state?
I didn't find that information of where that was. I didn't do an in-depth study on that, but.
Okay, so, you know, when Clara's here, I think she'll be giving us, I think I understand how they determine users' fees, and it's a discussion. Okay, so the next thing I provide, we provide is, from the town of Farmington, which has a sewer system about twice the size of ours, they have a very good explanation as to what they're doing. For example, the purpose of it, and then the calculation of charges. So, for example, in 156-53, calculation charges, the total cost of operation and maintenance of the sewage system, including replacement fund, O, M, and R, shall be recovered from the users of the system. Each user's share of the O and R cost of sewage shall be in proportion to the user's contribution, et cetera, et cetera. So they have said that it's got to be directly from the users. You know, I don't, that's not my, I'm not going to say that's my opinion, I'm just saying that that's not what we do here.
No. And again, and I read that, I actually got some information on Farmington. You're talking a town with a population of over 25,000 people.
Right.
You've got places that are all on their sewers, such as West Farms Mall, that whole strip, you know, it's, it is just so vastly
Different.
Different from Hebron. I would be far more interested in seeing
A smaller town.
Smaller towns, what Marlboro, East Hampton does, of course, again, you know, Colchester, to see how they manage theirs. And this all goes back to the East Hampton Water Pollution Control Authority, which is where ours goes to.
Right.
You know, also see what Lebanon's doing.
Absolutely.
You know, so, but something more our size and more our type of demographic.
Right. So my feeling, and I totally agree with you, my direction here is clarity. I think clarity is important to people. So, on the next page, for example, in part of their ordinance, on 156-54, they make a provision, all revenues collected under the provision of this article shall be kept in a separate, for other funds of the municipality shall be used solely for the purpose stated in Article 1 of this chapter. So, that's So, that's...that, to me, is interesting. It could be a useful type of ordinance, because if you're a user, you want your user fees to go into what you're using, right? And so, in terms of the bond itself, I think it confused things, in the sense now, you know, we have a bond now that owners are now paying for it. And there were some...I know when, in the town meeting, there were people that were saying, "Why am I paying for this?" You know? Why am I paying for...yes?
Can I just clarify one statement, because you keep referencing user fees?
Yeah.
But there was also a sewer assessment fund...
Right.
Where all those users do continually and annually pay a user fee now for the operations and maintenance, but there was a sewer assessment fund that was established at the same time the sewer use fund was set up.
Right.
And the sewer assessment fund also was paid just by the users.
Right.
And those monies were all depleted by then-management and the governing body to utilize a reduction in the mill rate and offset the debt from the bond that was taken initially.
Right.
So, I just wanted to clarify that there were two funds, and two funds that users paid into.
Right. And, go ahead.
So, Elaine, it's my understanding that prior to 2012, that management of the monies wasn't what you are doing with it now. So, after 2012, you changed that. How do we recoup that $8,000 that was taken from everybody that's gone for good now, right?
It's gone.
So, even the way you corrected it in 2012 going forward, even if you kept going at that pace, we still couldn't be able to keep up with maintenance and fixing it?
Right, because the assessment was for a 20-year life. That 20-year life has surpassed. So, it was the same life as the repayment of the bond. So, the bond...the repayment started in 1992 and 1993, through 2012, 2013. Was...and at John's request, I prepared a lot of documentation to...I have hard copies. I don't believe it's in your pocket.
So, it doesn't seem fair to everybody. You have an $8,000 assessment. Now, the sewer wears out. Should you pay another $8,000 assessment, just like a regular homeowner? When his sewer system wears out, he has to fix it and pay it again. That shouldn't really be a one-time fee, then.
Well...
What's your feeling on that?
That's to be determined.
That's to be determined.
That's to be determined, but it's...number one, some of those monies should have...that fund was intended to grow...
Right.
To offset when this upgrade needed to be done. That fund was pretty much depleted. There's only $78,000 in the fund balance, I believe, right now. So, the intention was to grow some of those monies for this purpose. Other scenarios that need to come into play for your consideration and education is that Lebanon was given the same mandate at the same time Hebron was. However, Lebanon did not come on to...did not install their sewer system and come online to 2014, 2015. We pay through the sewer use and the sewer operating fund, the WPCA governs right now. We pay fees into Colchester for our flows running through Colchester. We should have incurred those same revenue benefits from the town of Lebanon.
And we never have?
No, because I didn't do it.
Not until 2014, 15. So, my estimation is a $600,000 loss of revenue over the history of the time that Hebron's been on, that we should have also had into our fund to help offset our upgrades.
How many years was that, that they didn't pay?
They didn't...
It was quite a few...
Quite a few.
Over 20 years.
They just fought it.
It should have went on in 1993, and then 2014.
So, when we did our sewers, we anticipated that as revenue.
We were anticipating that revenue, which is about $30,000 annually, over the life of it. It was like $600,000. So, there's a lot of things that have played into this also. There was supposed to be, at the time, too, of the whole implementation of this sewer system and the two funds, there was supposed to be an annual contribution that went into the operating budget of $50,000 over the life, in preparation, again, for this upgrade. When budget cuts were necessary, that was the first item to go. It never went back, and that was supposed to be a recurring budgetary item. That would have built another $750,000. So, right out of the gate, we're short $1,003,000 from not having Lebanon online, from not having the budgetary item going in, and then...
Actions of passport.
The actions of utilizing those funds to offset the general fund operating budget. So, the intent way back when was to try and keep building this, and when the discovery was first made that the sewer assessment fund was going to fund, trust me, people went cuckoo then, that are the users on the line. Where's our money? People were standing up. I mean, Michael Hazel was the Chair of the Board of Finance at that time, and we were having a public hearing up at Ram, and I thought people were going to rush the stage. It wasn't free. So, you know, the users are feeling the same pain that the non-users are feeling, because we did pay in an awful lot of money, and it should have been accruing interest in building this time or not.
Right.
Nobody wins here.
It's...yeah, it's not a good situation.
Did you look at...I don't remember, because I know we've talked about this before. Did you look at, if all that had happened the way it was supposed to, how did we anticipate the costs that we're not going to incur today? Did you...the way back in the history, did someone say, "Hey, we think we need to save $5 million, so this is what's going to get us there?" Or was it $2 million, and now it's $7 million? Did...was it...how did we come up with that whole structure?
The initial number that keeps them, you know, and I'm just going through my memory bank, because unfortunately, as John has pointed out, there is not enough of the paper trail. And that is a sad situation also, too, because prior to my term as the Finance Director, one of the three predecessors before me had all kinds of documentation within his office. Unfortunately, he wasn't a very organized individual, and there was a lot of paper clutter that I didn't even realize in my office now, that there were two windows back in the time of his term as Finance Director, until I started cleaning the office. Unfortunately, the then-town manager was frustrated with the time it was taking me to clean the office, because I was reading paper, finding not only duplicated folders, but five and six folders with the same copied piece of paper within the folders. It was a time-consuming process, and then he just instructed Maintenance to go in and just wipe everything else out and get rid of it. So, there was some crucial documentation. I had this conversation with Gail the other day, some of which was even pertinent to the library.
Yeah, that's...
So, a lot of those original documents are long gone, unfortunately, and they shouldn't have been. But, so this is...we are in a very precarious situation right now. I understand the concept in the comments from the non-users, but I also see the point for the users as well.
Yeah, right.
So, can we, I guess, so it's our charge, all right? So, we want to prevent this from happening in the future, right? In terms of prevent another...so, we want to create transparency, we want to create a structure that aligns the finances with users and fees and future need, create a lockbox, all that sort of thing. And so, that sounds like a math exercise, so, but, so is our charge first, as a Board of Selectmen, to do what?
Well, you know, as we go through this, to understand the process, you know? And one of the things that I think we need to understand is, for example, how users' fees are determined right now. Because it's interesting, and I think there is a fear out there, at least last night, as I was going to my car, and Clara was giving me the sewer doctrine. There's a fear that there'll be an assessment. I'd never thought of that. I'd never thought that we would be putting through another enhancement, sewer enhancement assessment. So, that's...I don't think that's where we're going. I think what we're going towards is a clarity, you know, of what we're doing, a transparency, so that, like you said, Peter, in the future, people can...Board of Selectmen in the future, Board of Finance can look back and say, "This is what was done. This is what we need to do." And I think there also needs to be more communication between the WPCA and the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance.
And there was a survey that was done of some of the surrounding towns, and Hebron's users' fees are low. They definitely could...
Which is the next thing.
And increase.
So, the next thing is that, this is something that a We Are Hebron participant gave to me, who happens to be a...who actually does...he works for East Hampton Sewer District, does our stuff, but...and so, you go down here, and there's the EDUs. Let me tell you what I've learned. In Hebron, virtually everybody is...it's a flat fee for EDUs. It's one per resident, so it's $350. Some are assessed...some businesses are assessed by EDUs, a flat fee. For example, the Living Center is 42 EDUs, and Ram is 27 EDUs. I'm not exactly sure how they come up with that. I think they come up with it by number of users, but...so, it is apples to apples here. There's only like 10 businesses in which we actually meter water. And in that case, because we do EDUs by 150 gallons, and everybody else does it by 250 gallons, it means that the businesses that are metered are charged a higher rate than others. That is, they're charged at a rate of $583. So, that's the user's fee times 250 divided by 150. So, but there's only 10 businesses, and I'm not...you know, somebody's going to have to tell me why they do it and the other people don't do it. I don't know. So, if you look at this apples to apples, they are apples to apples, and you'll see that we are, we're low. And I think, actually, in the minutes of the WPCA, when they got this, they said, "We're low, we should increase them." And then the question is, you know, what should be the increase? So, that's that. And I don't know why they've got income and all this. I think it's to show that, not that it's, you know, that it's not onerous, I guess. An increase will not be onerous on Hebron users.
So, I have the sewer now. So, in Jewish City, the median household income is $44,000, way less than half we pay, and theirs is more than double the usage, so...
Right.
How, if we kept going at this rate, in 20 years, have enough money to fix it when it all breaks again?
Well, not to get to the punchline, but I think, looking at Clara's budget, which I photographed, and it's from yesterday, I was like, "Oh, my God, here's some information that's useful." And I don't think that enhancement was part of it. It's mainly a break-even budget. So, there was not money put in for future enhancement for...and that's why it's pretty much low. But that goes back to the history of, you know, of the users' fees and other things being put towards mill rate reduction. And that's a problem, you know? That's not...
What I would suggest is that...
It's a problem.
We hear what they have to say. This is the type of topic that I think probably deserves some sort of a workshop.
Yeah.
Try to get down and come up with answers at Board of Selectmen's meeting. It's going to take way too much time at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. It's the kind of thing that we really need to be able to sit down at a workshop, you know, hear what they have to say next week, but I would like to see a workshop set up that, you know, both Andy, Finance Director, would be at, WPCA, and us, and try to work through some of these concerns.
I think that's a great idea. You know, I was thinking of a subcommittee, but we're only five people, so...
Yeah, that's what I say. It's just, you know, get all the facts and figures and kind of hash it out, come up with, you know, the different scenarios...
Right.
And then go from there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, at Selectmen's Collins Request, I did prepare some of our spreadsheets and narrative, like this kind of an overview of the history.
Okay.
May I just...
Sure. Please. Yeah, this is really good.
I already handed it out, I think.
Oh.
Is that your letter?
Yeah.
Did you already...
Yeah.
With the spreadsheets?
Yes.
Maybe that...
Yes.
Oh.
Okay.
All right. Ah-ha. So, yeah, and I appreciate Elaine doing this, because when I went to the WPCA meeting two nights ago, it was enlightening, and, you know, I did get the blue notebook that Clara has, and had some great information in it. And Elaine got...I asked Elaine to give three-page max of what basically has gone on, or what...to describe what the issues are for, mainly for laymen like me. But, so, yeah, why don't you go through both funds and let us...
So, as stated, John requested a brief overview of the two funds. So, the first was the sewers. Both were created at the same time in 1992, 93. The sewer assessment fund was for the purpose of collection of assessments from all the users within the sewer district for repayment of most of the cost of the bond for the construction and installation of the sewer system over a 20-year period, as a mandate registered in Connecticut, with the mandate process beginning as far back as 1978. This fund is considered a special revenue fund within the town's chart of accounts, is audited annually, and was established, as I said, in 92, 93. While this fund still exists, its primary function now is for any new construction and/or user within the district, as subject system installations are no longer permitted for the state mandate. During its prime utilization, beginning in 92, 93, through fiscal years 2012, 2013, this fund collected roughly $8,43,796 in revenue dollars. It dispersed $8,18,292 in transfers to the general fund operating budget to offset the bond debt payments in the amount of $12,857,913. These transactions are provided, and I do have the one spreadsheet, but there was one that I prepared back in 2012, which might be in some of your other documentation.
Is that...at the end of the documentation, there's a one-page thing that's got like 11 footnotes to it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you go...that's interesting. So, if you go to the end of this, all of this, where is it? Go to the end of...and it looks like...where the heck is it?
Not the meter.
I actually have put it in this packet. It's in the back here, so it's duplicated information, but this is what it looks like.
Oh.
This is when I first discovered that the sewer assessment fund was the fund.
You've got some copies to get after.
Oh, good.
It's the last page. I won't exclude GPA.
What...and this?
That's it.
That's it. This is key. This one right here is key?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you were aware, you have that one.
Yeah, I got it.
So, if you'd like me to continue?
Sure, please.
The sewer system was installed in three different phases, beginning in 92, 93, and completed in 96, 97. It encompasses the entire center of the town business district, as well as Millstream and Wellswood Roads, north on Route 85 to Ram Road, including the middle and high school, Town Office building, Horton House, south on Route 85, including Hebron Elementary, connecting all the way to Colchester. Part of Hope Valley, Road is inclusive, Slicer Drive, Brennan Road, My Road, part of Route 207, North Pond Road, Lake Street, Ames Road, and the entire Amstel Lake area. I think Crouchville may be partially inclusive, but WPCA would need to confirm that. This is where I got into with the town of Lebanon. Had they come on to the line and installed their sewer system at the same time in 92, 93, instead of 2014, 15, estimated revenue we would have received from them annually in the amount of $30,000 would have equated to about $600,000 that could have built up in that fund as well. in that fund as well. Additionally, most of the revenue collected from the assessments was taken by management and the governing body to offset the debt payment schedule for 19 years, keeping the mill rate in check in as low as possible. It was also determined that $50,000 would be part of each general fund, which I reported to you earlier, and that could have established another $750,000 that could have been in the fund as well. The Sewer Use Operating Fund is for the sewer user fees, and that's an annual occurrence. And it, as John stated, he's accurate with his assumption, it's overall maintenance and payment of equipment needs, and flow reimbursement to Colchester, and it basically does just break even on an annual basis. Right now, there is a current fund balance in that fund of $871,189, and the WPCA is paying for the design of the upgrade for the first phase in the amount of about $330,000. The budget is established each year by the Water Pollution Control Authority, and it's managed by the WPCA Administrator. This fund is also a special revenue fund, and is within the town's chart of accounts, and is also audited annually, and the historical data is there for both funds.
So, I just, one question about when the board, when the management and governing body took the money, was it just to pay for the bond, or was it more than that?
Well, the bond was around $660,000 a year, so I think it was an attempt to offset that debt payment, so that there was, I mean, that would have been almost a mill alone just in that debt payment. So, I think that they were trying to keep the mill rate down by offsetting and taking the revenue out for the, I think it was to be specifically applicable towards that debt payment.
That's what my understanding was, and this is, in my layman's terms, what they did was the management brought to the board, that was assembled at the time, and for 20 years, to pay back that debt on the sewer, they, that was just their way of doing it.
Okay.
So, that's why it was appropriate for us to do what we did now, because of 20 years of that money going to offset everybody's taxes in town.
Correct. So, it wasn't that they actually put that money into somewhere where it wasn't, they actually paid the bond down early to try to actually save money.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was just a different way of doing it. I wanna make sure that the previous administrations aren't getting a bad shake.
That would make sense. I think we've done that, too, where if we paid this off now, we saved, you know, XYZ years of interest.
They didn't pay it off early. They still paid it over the 20-year term, although we did refinance some of the debt a couple of times.
Okay.
But they still paid it over the 20-year term, but they took money every year. And, you know, if you look at that other spreadsheet that was done in 2012, they started out taking around $300,000, ultimately going to $480,000, and then they took it for, they took $480,000 for 10 consecutive years. So, they just took probably too much. Like, I definitely can understand the rationale of trying to offset that debt payment.
Okay.
I just think the amount should have been much lower, and nobody was really paying attention.
So, on the 7.6 million, we're gonna, we're gonna borrow that now, basically, or...
No. So, the intent right now is because you have to utilize bond monies in a certain timeframe.
Okay.
Okay? So, we're just gonna be taking for the first phase and the roads.
Okay.
So, the other bond won't come into fruition until we're ready to actually do the upgrades to the pump stations that need to be done out in the future more.
So, we might borrow, what, 3 million for the sewer, something like that?
Probably borrow, I think it's 3...
Point 3.
We're gonna borrow about 6 to 7 million dollars right out of the gate, because 2.4 was for the roads.
Right.
And then 3.6 maybe for the pump stations. You know, the monies could even be less than that. We're still waiting for the final design phase from WPCA. I mean, I have Bond Council standing by, I have our financial administrator advisor standing by, and we're waiting still for the final design from right here to WPCA. And they also still haven't gotten the go-ahead from the state of Connecticut yet. So, there's a lot that's still up in the air.
Is it the 2% bond that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And over how long?
We'll probably do it for the 20 years.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to get an idea. I know revenues is, right now, are about $360,000 users' fees, right? What would be the debt payment on that?
The debt payment right now, contingent on what we truly borrow, is around $450,000.
Okay. See, that's interesting.
So, considering, once we determine what we really need to borrow, plus there is still some money in the Fund 5 that could be utilized.
Yep.
So, you know, that all does still need to be discussed.
Right, right. So, this is really, really helpful. I appreciate it. Appreciate you doing it so quickly. Okay, so, can I, I'll just go on and go through the documents. This is the WPCA revenue summary. As you see, we get $375,000 from users' fees. I think we get, oh, we get $28,000 from Lebanon now? Huh, pretty good. Anyways, that's the budget. I included an example of, wait a minute, this is another budget that shows how much money we have. This is the town of Hebron combined balance, balance sheet.
That's from one of the audits I've been...
Yeah, I don't... And then I provided a report from town of Cromwell, again, a bigger town, to your point, Dan, but it does provide clarity and, so, just an example. Of course, I mean, it is a bigger sewer. And then the last thing is the presentation put together by town for the bond to explain it. And I think that's it, except for, yeah, oh, and then, yes, so, we also include all of the businesses that are on a metered, and there, like I said, there's, I think there's 10 of them, find out why. And then the rest of the users and how many EDUs that they have. And then we have additional information here is what Elaine gave us, and I think I gave, we put together the photos of Clara's budgets, right? At least the 2016 budget that she had. So, it's, you know, it's not, I was just looking for information that would help us. Some of it's more helpful than other, because it's kind of been a journey here. I agree with you, Dan. That would be fantastic to listen next week, ask questions, go through it, and then get a workshop together.
Are you comfortable that, thank you, John, the work? So, you've done a lot of work on these things. Do you think the clear Clara, Kevin, as to what specifically we are trying to get at from an overall objective? Because if, I'm just thinking, we don't wanna spend two hours listening to the 20-year history of the Water Authority, I mean, of the community.
No, I...
So, I wanna be clear that what our objective is three or four things that you're outlining, that first and foremost, we wanna hear about these things to provide clarity tying back to the objective that you have.
Right.
And so, how do we do that? If not, we're gonna get, you know, it's, I appreciate it, but don't necessarily need all that information. What I'm interested in is, understand, I think you've raised some great questions and really good points, but specifically, what do we wanna be interested in? Have those comments directed at how we provide clarity around those issues. So, like, the lockbox comment you made, you know, that's interesting in terms of that. And so, how do we think about it for the future? Because if, we're going down the same path here, right? If we were gonna, history's gonna repeat itself, and then we'll be, you'll be retired in Florida. I'll be retired in South Carolina.
I'll never go to Florida.
But the point is that it'll happen again.
I'll still be working.
You'll still be working. It'll happen again, because we bonded, we took on the debt, we haven't said that the funds are gonna be used to offset that debt, so we're doing the exact same thing.
Right.
Right? And so, to me, it's about the three or four things that are most important for us to have a discussion around, the feasibility of thinking about these three or four things, rather than a whole 20-year history on...
Right, right.
Or if you've done that, great.
I have not. I think the first thing that's gonna come up is the legal authority, the relationship between WPCA and town of Hebron, or Board of Selectmen. And I don't know, because it's not clarified in here. And I don't know, I do know that there are statutes that say that the WPCA is the controlling authority on users' fees. However, I'm not sure that they're talking about the type of WPCA that we have, because most, like I said, most bigger towns, the users pay for the system. So, we have a place where it's not, it's not happening.
And maybe, is that, I guess I'm interested, is that even feasible? And it sounds like it probably isn't.
No.
To go out there and charge $10,000 for...
No, and that's not, like, that is not the objective here at all. It is, the objective, I think, is, like I said, is to, for me, it is, to have clarity as to what we're doing, why people are paying X amount, you know, amount of money. And so, both users and owners, you know, even if they don't think it's fair, at least it's written out exactly. They can debate it.
And it's great, because I think what I would hear sometimes from the public with this outrage over, you know, was stealing, taking that money and putting it towards something else.
Right.
There appears to have been at least logic, now it may not, you know, hindsight disagree with it, but it was some correlation between the money and the debt. So, you know, clearly, that was not happening. The perception was, you took our money, you did...
Right.
The perception was a misappropriation, and it really was not.
Really, it's not the case.
It was not a misappropriation.
And so, understanding in that communication, and also, the other side of the argument, for those of us who have accepted, is, let's also recognize that this is infrastructure. It's just like me saying, well, you could say it, I can't say it, I still have children in our school system, but I don't have kids anymore, therefore, we shouldn't invest in our schools. Okay? So, there is something in the middle of improving the communication as to how...
Right, for the natural gas system that we have.
All of that, right, absolutely. And so, I just, I think our challenge with all this good work is to make sure we kind of stay focused on what we're really trying to achieve, and make that easy for us then to make some decisions, because you bring up some really good questions and some good points. So, how do we, how do we get it so it's a focused dialogue on four or five very specific things? So, I think that to establish a foundation of understanding and not take the left turns down, you know, go down the rabbit hole, and come away not necessarily feeling like we're moving forward. So, I'm not sure of the answer, but I, that's the question that I have, how do we do that? With all this good work you've done, how do we really target, as to what we wanna, the board wants to get, come away with?
Well, this is why I was suggesting a workshop. This way, you could actually sit down, you know, spend a few hours on this topic. We would be able to get a far better history, a far better vision of where things are going forward. We would have a far better opportunity to actually get some input, and to give them what our concerns are. I'm not even sure, well, if we had Elaine there, do we need the Board of Finance? I'm not sure how, you know, the different players would fall into place, you know, but it's something that does definitely affect Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, WPCA, you know, for the benefit of the taxpayers to come up with answers to John's questions.
So, should we table the piece next week with the idea that this workshop is a better way to go about taking the next steps?
Fine. If that's what the board wants to do, I, that's appropriate.
I don't know. I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking at the time and the amount of time that is going to get enveloped in this topic. This could be a whole evening.
Yeah, like we, if I could just go back to past practice, like when we did the fire department study group, it was a workshop, and I think this is big enough that, as you suggested earlier, I think a workshop is appropriate, instead of doing it in a Board of Selectmen, we're here to conduct business of the town.
Right.
At the end of this workshop, can we have a bunch of things that we need to rule on? This is kind of vague right now. We need to have some concrete things in front of us that say, "Here's a way to do it, here's a way to do it, what do we, how do we wish to go forward with this?" Because this is vague right now.
Hopefully, at the end of the workshop, we would be able to answer a number of those questions.
Okay.
That would be...
Sure we would.
The, that would be the anticipated outcome, that we would be able to have a far better understanding of it, and to come up with a lot of suggestions and/or actions to implement.
Okay. Yeah.
That sounds like a good idea. So, because I think the workshop, Mark, to your point, the workshop would, if done effectively, would probably give us the direction, okay, after the workshop, we wanna do these four things.
Right.
And now, who does what?
Yeah, we shouldn't be there to just talk about this and discuss.
Oh, no.
We need a goal that we're going to, to try to resolve a problem with a bunch of solutions in front of us.
So, the workshop, is that a, how does that, logistically, how do we set up a workshop?
You just set one up, invite the WPCA, that's, you're gonna have to warn it, because you'd have a court, but we do it all the time.
I'm thinking of Paul Lloyd, man, hard to something.
No, no, no.
What, are you inviting the Paul Lloyd?
Yeah. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so, are we all in agreement then that we should set up this workshop? What we're trying to do?
I believe that everyone seems to be in favor of a workshop approach on this, rather than trying to do it at a Board of Selectmen meeting at night.
Yeah.
I'm still not opposed to having them come at our next meeting and maybe just do a quick overview, and maybe try to answer some of the questions. And it would behoove us, if we could actually review a lot of this documentation, and maybe we would have some questions, and I would ask, if you do have questions, and I know you're never gonna be able to ask all the questions upfront, because as they talk, it's gonna come up with other questions, but if we could get to them, some of our questions and/or concerns that they may be able to address, knowing that, as I say, the long term is going to be having an actual sit-down where we can actually discuss this. But, you know, just to, just to kind of get our feet wet a little bit as to why some of the things were done the way they were, you know, some of the history, you know, because we do definitely need to move forward, and we need to try to more adequately plan. And of course, you know, and hearing the reality, and, you know, to your point, you know, we have had some horrible budget years, where, I mean, in a perfect world, we've talked about sending up funds for vehicles and setting up funds for this and for that, you know, long-range planning, but long-range planning takes money. You know, that's just a sad reality of life. You know, and nobody, as far as I know, has got a money tree in their backyard. And I know I've driven a pick into the ground and no oil has ever come out. So, if it was, it probably I'd have to pay for.
The one thing you just paid with good intentions.
I think we have to be careful, because I think it's the hope of setting up money for future things versus, we have real money here that's coming in.
Right.
There's a big difference, right? So, I think, for me, I think of our questions early on as being representative of what the public would think about, which is not the deep dive, which is, "What are you doing with my money? How do you come up with my fees? How do I make sure that it's there when we need it? What is it not gonna be used for? And, you know, kind of what's, what are my kids gonna have to worry about 20 years from now? And so, I think we should think about it from the basis of what the public would wanna hear, so we can get kind of a baseline of understanding going forward.
Right.
At least, because, again, if not, we're gonna get into the weeds, which, you know...
I mean, one of the things is gonna, that's gonna be key is, is the users' fees. And so, there's gonna be a justification for it. And if we're already, if they're already saying that, you know, they've already said that to me, is they're low, then there's gotta be a justification for it, so we can tell the users why this is happening. And that's gonna be financial, so that's gonna be part of it. All right, I think this is great. I think workshop would be fantastic.
It's great that we have the workshop and have Kevin and Clara come to that, but do we wanna have them come to our meeting on February 6th also?
Well, they've already been invited. Clara's gonna be here for another thing. That's up to you, right?
Why are we duplicating things?
It's, that's my point. Because I think they have other things to do.
Sure.
Besides... Besides coming out.
I think it's appropriate if you're agreeing upon a workshop that we just have them come to that.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'm good with that. Okay.
So then we'll go with the workshop scenario. Do we want to rep from the Board of Finance or not?
Absolutely.
Do you think that?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you think that the board wouldn't want to come?
The whole board?
Yeah.
We can put it on our agenda for next week.
My only fear, sometimes you get too many people in a room. It ends up creating more of a.
Bismarck.
It'll definitely make it longer.
They eat them all.
I think that's what you were trying to say.
I was thinking about that.
Just keeps marching along. I'm sorry.
But the thing about this is that it's all accounting and all those guys are accountants or something like that.
Yeah.
So, or something, right? Financial people.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Moving on.
Okay, next is item 6E, I believe, and that's just the Maple Fest. We had our kickoff meeting on January 9th here in this room. It was heavily attended. There's going to be more of a push to have more local involvement. I know the superintendent of elementary schools is going to get involved, AHIHS, AHM, some of the other departments. I think the library's going to do something. Senior Centers is probably going to do something. So they're looking for some more Hebron involvement and to make it more of a Hebron event versus a commercialized thing. So it's a first-come, first-served. So if we get more Hebron activities to sign up, that will be less.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Less that will be out-of-town things to try to fit the budget. So that's the update for now. It was sent to the political entities, the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committees. And there's going to be Green Committee, Open Space, planning on having something there. So what we're going to do is combine a booth. It'll be like a Hebron booth, so we'll have enough representation. Before you couldn't, with just one or two committees, you didn't have enough people to man two days' worth of a full-day event.
I hate when my train derails.
Want me to jump in while you get back?
Go ahead, please.
I'll let you get back on the track. I have a question. Have we given some thought to pushing it back a couple of weeks?
Yeah, I forget. That was brought up with the Maple guys or that's the Maple time. We did push it back one week.
You did?
Yeah.
So two guys drive the whole consideration of when we're having this?
Well, it's two guys, but it's the only two Maple houses that we have. It was brought to their attention and we did poise that question at the meeting. And the consensus was they want to stick with that.
All right. I don't agree with that, but the consensus is two drives the rest of the 70 vendors involved. It seems not to be who should drive it.
And you want to push it back because of the weather?
Yeah, and more people will come and then they'll sell more maple syrup. So I don't know why they wouldn't be for that.
So you're looking to move it into April?
Well, we had discussed that, remember that? If better weather's going to get more people out. I stood out there freezing for the last 15 years and sometimes there's like 70 people there.
I know, I was out there the last few.
You don't like that?
I like when there's people around. It's less boring.
It was brought up.
People are there buying stuff and walking around. I like that.
Yeah, it was brought up, but I think after the discussion, it was not just the two Maple, it was the consensus of the people at the meeting, once they heard the rest.
What are the exact dates again, then, Andy?
The 21st and 22nd of March.
I am hoping that EDC gets involved and I am hoping that there is an explanation of the fee structure. I am hoping that as people see why the fees are what they are, that they will partake and be willing to become part of the event. It's sad when you have entities in town that do not want to participate in this and, you know, basically blame the fees. But fees are a reality. The expenses are real and they have to be paid for.
Yep.
You know, and it would be nice to see all the entities in our town become a part of this. You know, it's a great event. It brings people into town. I'm not sure if it's the first event of the season for the state, but it's got to be pretty close to it.
There's a whole thing around the Connecticut Maple Association. That adds something to do with the date. That's the day or the weekend. So there's a lot more than just that. But just quickly, if anybody's been to Keene, New Hampshire, when they have the Pumpkin Festival, everybody gets involved. It flourishes. All the businesses make money because they all cooperate. If you go to Lake George, New York, they close the village down and you can't get a room and every restaurant's full. And it's just, it's that type of economic development coordination. It's the branding that they have of their community. Everybody's bought into it because they're a stakeholder. So if we don't do that here, we're going to continue to struggle.
Right.
Yeah, and this is why, as I say, it's, I would love to see the EDC, you know, get more actively involved in working with the chamber to try to do an explanation. Because I don't think people fully understand why some of the fees are what the fees are.
Right, I agree.
You know, they don't understand what the costs are for this to get put on. And the chamber is not making any money, I don't think, by doing this.
I think the only ones complaining, though, Dan, are nonprofits. So I would consider that they get a reduced fee. If somebody's just out there to come and make money, fine, pay the fee. But if you're a nonprofit raising money to give to charity, why can't we reduce?
Well, it's not us. The thing is, it's not the town.
We don't have a saying saying that the nonprofits should have a reduced fee. They do with everything else.
Well, I think the budget is derived at paying for the expenses, the advertising, the insurance, and the police are the big drivers. So I think the fee structure is to do just that. And I think if she were to do something like your suggestion, she may not meet the budgetary requirement.
Needs.
I think we only have like four or five of them anyway. We have the American Legion. We have a couple of churches. And we're not taking nonprofits from out of another town, but our own town. It's only like three, what are we talking about here? $400, $300? To make people happy and get involved?
I don't know. I've never seen the actual invoices.
Okay.
So I don't want to.
It's like a $75. It's a $75 fee. And I'm not here to dispute what Mark's saying. It's a good thought process. But if you do it for them, how can you justify not doing it for somebody else? And there might be, like the Girl Scouts are a nonprofit, Boy Scouts, but then if you charge the school.
The RTC, the DC.
The school boosters.
I mean, all these are basically nonprofits. I don't know. And I hear you. I'm not sure how logistically.
How we could do that is if the town contributed.
The town would have to pay.
We would have to pick up the lost revenue and then we could do stuff like that.
I mean, you can think about that. If you're trying to drive in more participation and having some frustration over local businesses that aren't, that are saying the fees, we can say, if you're a Hebron-based business, the town will pay for it. Because we're trying to pull people in. And so some of those will be nonprofit. If they're a Hebron nonprofit, I don't necessarily believe that if it's a Lebanon nonprofit coming in, you got to pay the fee.
I'm with, I agree with that.
But maybe we think about it. If we look at the cost and we're saying, listen, we want everyone to come out. This is a town, a community event, and we want every stakeholder to be excited about this. So if you're a Hebron business, you're a Hebron nonprofit, the town will pay the fees. And I don't know how much that money is, so we'd have to look at that. Maybe there's a different way to do it and to get more involvement. And maybe, maybe it's short money.
The total budget for the Maple Fest is around $13,000. And the biggest part of that is the police services for the pay, for the state police and the local police.
You know, I've been thinking this for, like, every time we talk about this. If it were a little warmer, you know what would drive this a little bit more? Is a beer tent. If you go to Keene, if you go to those places.
Isn't that a 12-month-a-year thing?
John's not kidding because I met with a guy that runs the beer tent at the Lions Club. And it's the biggest, it's the biggest revenue producer.
Why, getting more police, right?
No, you know what? The way they regulate it, if we look at their model, it's not that bad. You can't drink so many beers. You have a reporting system. They know how many beers you had in a certain amount of time. And we really haven't had any, many that problem. The problems we have is if people drinking in a parking lot are drinking illegally.
Oh, okay.
Do you really think that people relegate the amount of beer they drink to the temperature outside?
Good point. Good point. Well, we just, we just need, you know, a couple of snow days, you know, at the Maple Fest. And it will be in April pretty soon.
Oh, it's snowed before.
Yeah.
We've plowed the parking lots well. It's getting ready to.
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah, sure.
I just wondered why, like, Fennecans or somebody didn't have a beer tent. We got, we got a thousand, 1,000 people, maybe, or?
Well, see, those are the types of businesses that do benefit from the Maple Fest, but they don't even want to pay the $75 participation fee.
Oh, my God.
No, that's, this is the problem.
That's the issue.
Yeah, now, that's wrong. Because with something simple, we pay it just to be involved in it. We could be open anyway. You can't come over and tell us we can't have our restaurant open. But we pay it because it gets us the advertising and we just want to be a part of it.
We would hope the other businesses would.
But they don't, but they get, they get angry because they don't think it goes down that far and it's concentrated up here. I've been listening to these arguments for 15 years, just because I'm standing there in a uniform. People feel I'm a complaint booth.
But people go up there, they stop into all these places. While they're there, they walk around, you know. I was with my cousin last year and she's never been to Hebron before. So we walked all around the town hall. You know, we walked around Church of Hope, you know, just virtually all around the entire downtown Hebron.
Perfect example is after Sunday's tractor parade, and the temperature might have something to do with this, everybody goes to, like, Gina Marie's to get something to eat. And there's a waiting line out the door. But in the last couple of years, they haven't participated or paid the, I'm not trying to single them out.
No, but it's, the town does benefit.
Hey, that's our biggest day of the year, believe it or not. That's the day we make the most money in the whole year. At something simple. Not even close.
Really?
Yes. Double, double our best day.
That's because it's cold, like Andy said.
And people want to come in here, yeah.
So we can't move a table then?
Oh.
You know, but this is the type of information that, you know, we need to, and as I say, I'm hoping that the EDC will grab this and maybe run with it. You know, it does help these businesses. It is good for their businesses. It does give them exposure.
No doubt.
They do profit from this. And, you know, they need to be a part of it.
Right.
And if it goes away, it all goes away. It's a loss to the town.
Yeah, lost opportunity.
I guess my big point is, I'm sad to see that whoever got unhappy at the Legion is not there anymore. Because that was like a fixture of it.
Yeah.
So I think it's worth trying to repair that, whatever we have to do. It's funny without, for me, having stood there for 15 years or walked in front of you, it seems funny that they're not there.
Yeah.
The issue that happened there was just, um.
Kind of, no, too.
Yeah, they lost a lot of, you know, it's attrition. They've gotten older, you know, veterans of wars are older. And they don't have a lot of the volunteers that they used to have. So it just, they just couldn't do it for the two days. And then, quite frankly, financially, the stuff that they sell, if it's bad weather and it, they can't have it, they end up eating all that.
Wasn't there a question of competition too? When they thought that maybe their sales were up because somebody was selling a similar, similar item?
Well, originally.
I mean, I listened to the place. I think it's worth trying to resolve it myself.
Originally, there wasn't any food trucks. So they were like the only game in town. But now, once again, to try to generate the revenue, they had to open it up.
Well, they have a liquor license, don't they?
Yeah.
What are you saying?
I don't think they'll let anybody in there, though.
I don't think you serve to the public. I'm not sure how.
No, they don't.
License, what.
You got to get buzzed in back there.
Is that right?
You do. They have to know you're coming.
Jeez.
So the people watching us, I guess, what we're saying is, try to get involved. It's a great thing for the town. It's a great event. And I ask that you get involved. Please, you know, don't let everybody else carry the weight. If everybody shares it, it would actually drive the cost down. You know, if we had more participants, that would also drive the cost down.
And make more people want to come. The bigger it is, I think, it makes itself grow.
Yeah, and so at any rate.
Okay.
Also, they should do like what the Lions do for the fair, for the fireworks, you know, get sponsors. You know, $10, $15 sponsors.
They're trying to do that with the advertisement in their brochure.
They need, they need to go and hit all the other ancillary businesses that operate in this town. Because no one ever comes knocking on my door, for one thing.
They will now. Thank you for that announcement.
That's okay.
They know you were there, Dan.
Yeah, that'll scare them away.
Yep.
The tractor parade is an awesome part of it. I even like the tractor parade.
Got to have the tractor parade.
Got to have the tractors. It's, it's.
Okay. Moving on. Town manager annual evaluation. Did you want to do?
We were going in an executive session, but I think we need to watch the time.
Okay.
Because we still aren't done with the rest of the agenda.
You want to do that another time, then?
Well, I had, as a new person, I had a couple of questions for Gail and she had volunteered to do a little additional research, which I think would better prepare me to participate in the process. So if we could table this, I think, for a suggestion on time, but also just to get a little bit more information that might help us better go, the newer people to go through.
I agree.
Two of us to go through the process.
Okay.
Because we're newer at it, if that's okay. I mean, I'm with her on timing and I did ask.
That's fine.
About getting some additional.
No, I, again.
Let's move on.
Yep. Okay. Save that so we don't have to kill another tree next year. Next would be the farm, right?
Yep. So next up is item 7A. And there was some questions at the last meeting regarding the farm lease and the forestry management. So there's a map behind Mark that depicts Keene Road and it has both sides of the road, the town complex to the left on the top and then also the park area on the right. And that you can see in the blue line outline, that's the property that the towns own. So in doing a little research in this after it came up, I met with Rich and a couple of the park commission members. And that farming of the park side, the lower side of that map, that is a part of their plan. That was part of the actual park purchase of the property. That was, it's written in their plan that they want that to continue to be farmed so people can visually see that being done. So I, I didn't know that at the time, but that was told to me after the last meeting. I was unaware of that.
Andy, do you know which is corn and which is hay or what they're?
There was a map in your.
I can get it.
In your, in your packet. It doesn't depict which crop it is? I don't think so.
I just, I see it.
Oh.
The course of the road is corn and all this is hay.
Okay.
Yeah, Bear Ball is all, all hay.
Are they, they're proposing up here, though, too?
Whatever's being farmed now.
So this is corn and this is, this is corn.
Right.
So no additional land is going to farm it, just?
Not on those two parcels.
Okay.
The other thing in talking with Rich is, the first thing that usually goes into an area once you start, stop managing it are the invasives.
A bunch of Russian olives in there and you won't be able to walk in there.
And just to point this out, and it may be the individual that we're leasing it with, but Bear Ball does a real good job of going in and cleaning up along those walls. If you've ever seen that, it's beautiful in there where he, he goes right up and on the off-season cleans that.
Won't settle on all kinds of poison ivy and vines and everything.
Well, exposes the walls. And I, to me, that's.
I agree with you.
Huge asset where if he didn't do that, I don't know that we'd be doing that.
Well, we wouldn't probably have the personnel.
Exactly.
And the, and the time to do that.
Yeah. And that was a benefit that came from Rich when I was talking to him about that. That's not my observation. This is, in doing the research for you guys, that's what came back.
Okay.
John, you still object to that?
Can we just instruct them not to take any wood this time?
Yeah, that.
Yeah, that was a.
You mean cut trees down, too? No, they shouldn't be cutting trees down.
No, that's, that's clearly been defined.
Okay.
And that's in writing.
All right. They shouldn't be cutting trees now.
Yeah, that is.
Somebody cut some trees down.
Yeah, that was an employee of an employee, but still, it doesn't matter. Happened and it won't happen again.
I'm with you on that.
Okay, so we're all, we're okay with this for now? Donna, thank you for putting those maps together and labeling all that. Donna, thank you for putting those maps together and labeling all that. Ned was willing to come in after his third milking with his boots on and stuff and talk further about this.
So you're saying it didn't smell to him in your office?
Get some of the aroma.
Yeah, no, that'd be good.
Makes the carpet grow better.
So then next would be the draft agenda. So are we, did I hear that we're gonna, we'll try to schedule a workshop and not have?
Not have B.
Yeah. And farm lease can come off?
Yes. We should talk about the retreat.
You guys got to talk about the retreat.
We're going on a retreat.
At, prior to the elections, it was discussed as to whether or not to do a retreat for the Board of Selectmen, just to kind of get everybody, we can't say on the same page, or at least that, so everybody had an idea of where everybody was coming from, an idea on procedures, a, a, a whole host of different things to kind of discuss and, and to kind of work out. And it was discussed, and I brought it up, to have the retreat before the election seemed senseless since we already knew that it was going to be new people on the board anyways. So to have a retreat was kind of.
So are, are we going to have somebody facilitate our discussions? Are we going to have somebody present to us to enlighten us on certain topics? Or is this going to be the five of us sitting there drinking a beer, talking? What is, what's our, what's our goal here?
Mark, I don't drink beer.
You can have wine?
Wine, thank you.
Okay. Well, is the drink of choice or, or milk? What is, what's the, what is the retreat?
It's, it's.
I can make it free. We'll go to something simple and we'll eat there and have some drinks and talk about whatever we want. What do you, I don't know what you foresee this as.
I'll give you the wine.
A retreat to me was when I was in the seminary and we went out to the grotto and, and prayed and we were, got lectures and, and sermons. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do.
Is that what we're gonna do?
No, it was part of the evaluation last year, actually. It was one of Andy's goals, actually, to put together a retreat.
You come?
Well, it's got to be agreed upon by the whole board. It was then, and then we had the election, then we went to have the election. So here you are, you have to give me some guidance with, and everybody's got to weigh in.
And if anybody, we don't want to have a retreat. That's, whereas is employed at another company, they call it in advance. If we don't want to have it, that's, that's fine too.
I'll do what everybody, everybody wants to do.
We could have it in, in the, the beer tent at the Maple Fest.
I just, and I'm not, I'm not trying to tell the Board of Selectmen, I'm just going to tell you what you have on your agenda or your plate in the next month. You're gonna have the, I'm gonna talk about it, I mean, you're gonna have the all boards meeting. We just decided to have a workshop on the sewers.
Yeah.
We're going into budget. And there's something else out there I'm missing. What else, Donna?
Well, the budgets alone are two nights a week for.
Oh, the evaluations.
Evaluations. You know, so this is always a busy time of year. It, it just is historically. Really, probably our slowest time of the year is the September, October timeframe. And usually, once a budget has been decided, that period of time between us handing it over to the Board of Finance and the actual vote is usually a fairly slow period of time. But this right now, this time of year is usually very, fairly chaotic.
You wouldn't get me on another night. I've got enough other meetings to attend to.
Yeah, we all do.
We all.
All right, it's tabled.
Okay.
But not forgotten.
Okay, Dan.
So if you have anything else for the draft agenda, get that to us. We have a little bit of time before the next meeting. It's not till the sixth. And if you want, yeah, I guess if you want anything on the agenda, get it to us so we can get the backup as well. That's that. I don't know if there's any other.
No.
New business?
No.
All right. The moment I've been waiting for. So I'll start off with a correspondence received today, written yesterday. It's a letter addressed to myself, Andrew Tierney, Town Manager, regarding letter of resignation. Dear Andy, I'm ready to inform you of my resignation as fire chief for the town of Hebron effective no later than June 30th, 2020. We may elect to move this date backwards to suit the needs of the town. I have many reasons for this letter. Some are personal, some are professional, but the decision is not based on one factor. It has been a joy to work within the town. I reside. A pleasure to work with you and the staff at the town hall and the staff at the fire department. I'll continue to serve in the Hebron Fire Department for years to come. Town is growing. Our call demand is increasing and discussions that will affect the future of the Hebron Fire Department need to be done by the next fire chief. I will forward a status of the department under separate cover and that will shed some light on where we are and at where we need to go. Thank you for the opportunity to serve my community. Sincerely, Nick Wallach, the third Hebron Fire Chief. So he's looking to give us an out for the next budget, but I know their sentiments are, they're looking to, it's been a long-term plan of the town or the Boards of Selectmen in the past to start slowly working towards a full-time fire chief. Nick's part-time. He's claiming that this would be a good time to start heading into a full-time position, a working fire chief.
Yeah, the other thing too would be a, a fire chief with EMS credentials also, which Nick does not have. My personal feeling, and I know it's another meeting, sorry, everybody. My personal feeling is whether it's, it's, it's just Andy or Andy and us or whatever, I think we need to sit down with the leadership of the fire department and verify where they are going, knowing EMS has again changed its rules, more of its rules. I think it behooves us to, to see some long-range planning on the fire department's side, fire me at EMS. We need to know what we're going to be up against in upcoming years, especially when it comes to budgeting.
Well, for some of you guys that don't know, it was stated many years ago, and I have the same sentiments as the Town Manager, but the biggest fear is you guys are in charge of this town. And the biggest fear is not being able to protect or serve your town in, in the fire department EMS. So I'm not.
And police.
Well, that's, and police.
But the police, we have a paid, we, we have a paid force on, on, yeah, but yes.
That's true.
So I don't want to alarm anybody, and this is one of the reasons that Nick is kind of feeling the heat and, and I, I sweat it out too. I know you get the calls as well. But we had three calls this morning between four o'clock and more than eight o'clock where we couldn't get our ambulance out. We had to rely on mutual aid. And that's a terrible feeling. And Hebron's never really had a problem, but due to shrinking enrollment and, and more of the requirements you have to have to stay current and, and be in EMT or EMS, you know, it's happening all over the place. But we know we have a problem between those hours before our maintainers come on at eight o'clock and people are getting ready to go to work. They can't just jump in the ambulance and go to the call. So it's, it's, you never want that be that one call. And that, we had three of them this morning. There was three calls before, between four and eight o'clock and we couldn't get our ambulance out. And that's not a good feeling for me and I wouldn't think it would be for you either.
It's actually basically an hour's worth of paperwork or computer work, once you are back at the firehouse to do all the data entry that the state is now mandating get entered. It's no more, you go to the scene, take what you gotta do, go home, take a quick shower and go to work. Those days are done.
Correct.
And we have to be cognizant of it and we need to, we need to be adequately aware and prepared. And we need to think about what is going to be coming down the pike. And, you know, as a past fire chief, where I've seen the state going scares me to death for the volunteer ranks.
That's the problem. You're not going to have volunteers anymore because you can't have.
They can't do it.
At some point, right?
You know, and we need to have a contingency plan. Yeah. The, the last thing I want to have is to have the fire department come in and say, I'm sorry, we can't do it anymore. And they're not saying that. You know, I don't want to say that that's what they're saying. But, yeah, we need to know what their long-range plans are and, and how they plan on meeting the newer commitments. So that we know what we need to do to adequately meet those requirements, those needs.
Keep the town safe.
Yeah. You know, I've got some ideas of what they're going to come in and say. Sadly, I don't think there's any idea that doesn't involve a cost. And that's, that's just a reality. And I think we, we, we better be on, on the leading curve of this, not be, not on the backside of the curve.
Peter had something to say.
Well, I just, I just want to understand. So we have to rely upon mutual aid. My assumption then is our response time would then suffer because they're coming from somewhere else.
Yes.
They're not coming locally.
Yes.
And so, but we would expect to need mutual aid in what normal scenario?
The normal scenario for mutual aid is if we were already out on a call.
Right.
And we got another call. That was the, that was the mutual aid agreement back in the day when we had plenty of volunteers. If you were already fighting a fire or busy with your ambulance, servicing your community, the mutual aid pack was just for that, to cover you while you guys were tied up. Not if you can't get a crew out.
Basic service, which is for, I, like, you know, so it's six in the morning, I have an emergency. It can't be like, well, if you had had it at nine, we would have been good, but.
It's not funny, but.
Like a, a critical safety.
It actually happened. We had a, we had a resident, a popular family in town, a woman fainted, hit her head on the sink, rather large cut head injury, and we, nobody came. And it took a long time until we finally got Marlboro to show up. And, you know, here's a guy that's been in town forever. His family's back in the eighteen hundreds and he couldn't understand how we couldn't get an ambulance to his house. And he, until this day, he's like, before you start paying for this or doing that, I would like to see more people driving the ambulances, you know, and I, and I can understand where he's coming from.
I would think we, I would think this to me, just as I'm listening, new, listening, this seems to me to be like critical. I don't like that we're going to work on it later, but like we're going to work on it right now. Because our job from any, probably the most important thing we do is to make sure that we give some sort of semblance of, of peace of mind that our citizens are safe. That's the first thing. And then we have education, we have all these, you know, these few other things. But if, if people don't feel that they're safe, which this example is maybe not, that to me is like we stop what we're doing and we figure that out.
And this is where, as I say, I, I really, I really personally feel we need to have a, a face-to-face with the leadership. And I, I, I hope they will lay out their concerns and whatever, so that we can come up with some sort of plan. We've got to know, we got to plan.
Okay.
Mark, you were. Yeah, um, just last week, I had an emergency call at Ram and Columbia had to come because the ambulance was somewhere else already. So now think about if something really bad happened there, nobody's coming.
Well, the, the.
And not in a time where they're going to help me, somebody will come.
Yeah, but the difference though between if Hebron is already out on a call, dispatch will know that and they will automatically initially call out the next due mutual aid.
Right, but it's fifteen minutes instead of seven or eight.
Yeah, but the losses is if no one responds, they will retone and then they will retone sometimes a third time.
That's scary.
Then they will retone mutual aid.
So, so how soon can we do this?
Meet with them?
Yeah.
I agree, John.
I would say the sooner the better, but.
Well, can we, we, can we go back to our February, I mean, our next meeting? I mean, I, I see this as like immediate, whatever we need to do.
Yeah, this is self-insane.
Yeah, but again, to me, this is, is more of a workshop type thing. I don't know, you know.
But I think for us to understand to quickly try to figure out how we can potentially address and prevent what happened.
Yeah, and I don't want to, it doesn't happen every day, but it, it happens.
It's real exposure. It's not like a weird thing, like there was five fires all at the same time. This is like, don't.
It's a, it's a time we can't fill our crew. It's, we've known this for a couple of years.
Yeah. I mean, when I first, when I first was selectman, I met with Nick and, you know, he was talking about, we're transitioning from a volunteer to a professional fire department. And how are we going to do that? So he's leaving now. It's a good time to assess it and sooner the better. And so I'm available, anytime.
You, you don't think we could do the workshop with the sewers and that all in the same night?
No.
We're going to be talking about the sewers for two hours?
You got John Collins coming.
John, can we keep it to an hour fifteen with, for each of?
I don't want to say it's not me. That's going to be.
All right.
I just have questions, let me tell you. I don't have a doctor.
So the fire thing we should get.
I'll reach out to Nick and I'll tell him about this discussion tonight and I'll send you guys an email of what he's come up with.
I think the fire thing could probably be done possibly even on a Wednesday night. It seems to be a night that fewer people have meetings. I don't know why, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I know.
Everything is Tuesdays and Thursdays.
It's true.
Okay, I'll, I'll be in touch via email.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so then.
We have more continuing Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Speaking of meetings, all boards meeting. It's scheduled for Tuesday, January 30th. And that would be at 7:00 PM at the library.
It's Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday. Thank you, Donna. 7:00 PM at the library. And then we, it's for both, you know, all the boards and we're going to have Tom Hennig come and speak about FOI and social media and rules and procedures and along those lines. Ken Slater will be there to speak on behalf of the boards and commission members and their roles. Similar to what we kind of do most every year. So mark your calendars.
At the library.
At the library, 7:00 PM, as Donna said. Mine, mine does say, it does say Tuesday.
We redid it.
Okay. I just wanted to know. I didn't, I read it.
Two months ago, it was on a Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, we, we redid it in recent.
Okay. Because I don't want it in the packet. I'm sorry about that. So that's that. Next is the Town Manager's Report. So we're working, we're working, we got numbers for the budget for the Health Department District. So we're going to have a public hearing for that so we can get the numbers to the towns for their, plug their numbers in for the contributions to that. It's kind of going up a little bit. It is what it is. We're not putting a lot of money in capital. We're, but we, we have two senior employees retire, so the payouts were huge. So that's done. And then we'll be setting up a meeting. Our bylaws say by the end of this month, we have to have a public hearing and then we'll adopt that. So we're, we continue to meet with the department heads on the CIP proposals and getting that information in. And we're doing well with that. We had the health insurance consortium meeting today, this morning, and our number that we're using now that we're self-insured at this time is 6.4%.
Wow.
And that's still may could go down, but we're getting close. But that's a better number than we've.
I can remember where you came in, it was going to be like 12%, 14%.
And we have a million and a half dollars in the bank, which would have been anthems if we were fully insured.
Right.
So we're right on target of what we proposed. We're doing quite well. We put another hundred thousand dollars into the interest-bearing account the end of last month.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, that was a great move. It took a long time to get it, but it's, we're, the fruits, we're starting to get the, you know, bear the fruits of our labors. I went through Maple Fest. We're starting negotiations with the Supervisors Union. I met with Nick Grell or our labor attorney and we're setting those up. I don't anticipate too much stuff there. We did a lot of cleanup the last time we met. I went to the EDC dinner at Gina Marie's. That was pretty well attended. It was, Troy opened up his place on a Monday where he's normally closed. And it was pizzas, so it was dough. The theme was dough for the new year.
Yeah.
So SBA, Small Business Association, came down and did a presentation with EDC. And we had some small businesses there and some possibly new investors listen to it and how you can obtain monies and grants and things for startups and new businesses and stuff. So it was well, well-received. And it was, it was a decent. So it was well, well-received, and it was, it was a decent attendance. We met with the Building Committee and the Library Board of Trustees regarding the library upgrades to the HVAC system. That went very well. I got approval letters from both the Building Committee on what's being proposed and also the acting chairman of the library. So that should be put into the Guinness Book of World Records. It took a while to get that done. So we're going to have that foreclosure on the landed property, the treasure factory, that's scheduled for February 1st at noon, so we're going to need some police presence at that, I believe. And at that time, we'll see what happens. The signs are up, the tenants are all calling and checking and to see what they should be doing, and I said, until this takes place, he's still the owner, you still have to pay your rent to him, and he has the option to possibly even purchase that back if he, if he pays what's owed, but I don't know what his situation is, so. We do have more than one investor interested in those properties, so it'll be interesting to see. I will attend that and see how that goes. But that's been a long time coming in the courts and stuff, so moving forward. And then as I stated, the all-boards meeting and then Nick's letter. Did you have anything else, Donna? Did I miss anything?
Quick interviews for the small cities consultant.
Yeah, so tomorrow, we're going to interview consultants for the Small Cities Grant. One would be to administer the grant. We already got to do the second phase of the upgrades at Stonecroft, and then two, to help us try to secure monies for the risk in property. And Mike's getting some financials together on that, and we'll see what that actual price tag is looking at.
Where do we stand on the purchase of the ball field?
Hopefully they're going to, I was told today, I met with our town attorney this morning, and that's, that's the topic of discussion, and I said, we got to get that done. Their, their being the St. Peters, their attorney was ill, and then for some other reason, our attorney had some issues, they just haven't been able to get together to get it done.
Okay.
So they're waiting on the final survey and some other documents, but I was told it could happen as soon as tomorrow, but at the latest next week, so we're anxious to do that.
There will be a closing or just more discussions?
No, closing. Rich sends an email weekly to the, to the attorney and to the St. Peters, and Rich has things he wants to do, and we don't know any yet, Rich being Rich Colarco. So that's all that I had.
Anything on the bridge? You know, we were at one point talking of possibly a bridge going across the stream Kwai.
That's going to be in the CIP. That's all designed, and there's a proposal with a cost to come in front of you guys in the budget. Yeah, that's been designed and.
Perfect. Okay.
When you give me things to do, I do them.
I know. I know.
Yeah, that's all, that's all that'll be brought up.
John gives him a lot of things to do too. Hardly.
Okay. Next would be the consent agenda, and these are items which are considered routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to, for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And basically, we just have the approval of the January 2nd, 2020 regular meeting and the tax refunds. So does anybody have anything that they want to pull out? Hearing none. Make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein is individually adopted, and it would be, again, the tax refunds and the January 2nd, 2020 regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, so be it. Okay. Liaisons, Mark.
So I'll do AHM and Ram together?
Yeah.
Not much to report from AHM. Because my role at Ram is unique, and I'm up there 40 hours a week and sometimes more, I think I have two things to report. I don't think we, I told them this, that we started an active shooter response team. Had I said that at the meeting? So now I took it a step further, and I've identified 40 kids called peacemakers, and we've been training for a year, and we're having a stop-the-bleed program. So we're going to become self-sufficient and taking care of ourselves and not wait for people. So it's a nationwide program. I'm trying to get the kits donated, they have tourniquets and gauze and coagulants in them, and the kids are phenomenal and eager to do it. And actually, four paramedics are coming that were volunteers are now full-time, like Cody, Tyler, Brian, and they're all graduates of Ram, so we're going to have a great day doing that, and we've designated them to be there for like five classes. They can just leave their classes. So the board's quite behind that and wants us to be proactive in making it the safest place that we can, and they've been very supportive of me in moving forward with those things.
Perfect. Good.
And other than that, that's, that's my contribution.
Next, down the list, I just go in order. Gail?
All right, I had a few things this week. Yesterday, I went to the Commission on Aging meeting. They are, as Andy said, interested in being represented at Maple Fest, and many members are concerned as they hear about objections to the development of the Rifkin property. And there were, members on the board were telling me about how much the housing is needed and how what, the numbers we're talking about wouldn't, is not even going to meet the needs of the people who are asking for it. The other thing that wasn't good to hear was that the community lunches that feed people during the week are again running out of money, and in order to do that, they're going to drop lunches one day a month for, for a few months. One of the board, the commission members then went back to her place of work, Glastonbury Healthcare, and they are going to pick up those lunches.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, that, good. The Hebron Board of Ed is meeting here, I wonder if they're out yet. The Douglas Library, I had to throw that in. The Douglas Library met Monday night, and as Andy said, we got the Environmental Sisters Corporation gave their presentation, which was very good. And there were some samples of the flooring again for us to look at, so that was it.
Okay. Peter.
Just on the Board of Education, the, they're meeting with a consultant on the 20th, 23rd, 23rd.
23rd, not the 29th?
I think it's the 23rd, and then there'll be a public meeting, presentation on the 6th.
Oh, the same day as I was meeting, yeah.
That was by design. Just, so that's, that's the Gilliard Hill Legal Defense, yeah.
Okay. Peter.
Board of Finance, Parks and Rec did not meet, so I have no information to share.
John?
Land acquisition, my favorite committee, met, and I think the big thing is they're going to be asking for $190,000 this year. That was the number. And one of the reasons was their fund is depleted, they've used a lot of the money for, for general, you know, some of the general stuff that we have, the Horton property and the St. Peters. But the percentage, I guess, has gone down the last 10 or 15 years, so there'll be a more, bigger justification, justification during budget time. Yeah, the Water Committee met, and everything's going, the consultants worked on it during Christmas, and now we're getting the school involved so that they're, the principal's coming to the meeting, and it's going along really well. I think that's it.
Andy.
The RFP for the Ram Campus Improvements is at the attorneys, both ours and Ram's, because the money came to the town of Hebron, because bonded monies don't go to Boards of Ed, it's our project, we have to put that out to bid. We're starting to get a little bit behind on our forecast from the DOT review, of course, so we've, but I'd hate to not make this construction season, we're doing, could I get that done? Ken's been pretty good. I'm supposed to have the comments back from him, the town's attorney, tomorrow. The only thing we're waiting for is the Ram attorney had sent, or was supposed to send his comments to our attorney to consolidate them, and that, that's probably going to happen tomorrow, so worst-case scenario, I'm hoping to get those back next week, get those to the engineer and design firm with the comments, and then we'll try to work on getting that out to bid, because we want that secured and somebody ready to mobilize and go right at the end date of school. And it's starting to get tight. We kind of wanted, on our forecast to schedule, we would be supposedly on the 14th of this month out to bid, and we're not ready to do that yet. So we're still trying.
Okay.
Just while I'm thinking about it, you know, this, the consultants report, they're reporting in the executive session to the Board of Education, and then they're having the public meeting on the February 6th. So we won't be able to go, I guess, because we'll have a meeting, right? So can somebody request that we be invited to the executive session meeting? Would that be possible?
With their attorney?
We can't go? No?
I can't see anybody giving permission for that. You say you can't ask, but.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's on the 6th, the executive session, we'll still, would be here anyways, right?
No, the executive session's on the 23rd.
Oh, I, I didn't, okay.
Yeah, the public meeting, the public presentation by the consultants on the 6th. Can we get a draft report?
We could request it.
Yeah, that, that sounds.
I'm meeting with the superintendent next week.
Why don't we have our meeting on the 6th up there? It's late, I'm tired.
Wow.
Jeez, Gail, stirring up trouble. Yeah, if we could get a draft report, that would be wonderful.
Request that. I have, like I said, I'm going to meet with him next week on a bunch of things.
I would request if you could.
Yeah. Yep. I'm not sure they'll give us something that they haven't given to their board yet, but if they have that, then absolutely, if it's in the packet.
Once they give it to their board, if they could.
They've agreed to do that with me already, anything that they give to the board, we're supposed to get, but if, I'll try to get that even sooner.
Well, even if we got the 23rd, it'd still be not on our meeting night.
Yeah.
So, okay. Great. Fire Department, they're doing, going to be doing the Sugar on Snow again for the Maple Fest, like they've done for the last, I don't know how many years. They're also, they're hopefully going to plan on something else out in the base, where they've done rescues or tearing apart vehicles or whatever, so that was good. Hebron Historical Society, the Rosie the Riveter dedication is going to be August 23rd at 2:00 at the Observation Post. They're hoping for a couple-hour program, and this is, and I'm just going to read this. You know, calendars should already be marked for August 23rd, 2:00 Observation Post, which is right out here. Dedication of Rosie the Riveter Memorial Rose Garden in the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II. Some of the tidbits, some of the things that they're talking about is letters that, you know, the people sent back to their wives, some of the different things that the Rosie the Rivers did. Rosie the Riveter is a cultural icon of World War II, representing the women who worked in factories and shipyards during World War II, many of whom produced munitions and war supplies. These women were sometimes, these women sometimes took entirely new jobs, replacing the male workers who joined the military. Rosie the Riveter was an iconic poster of a female factory worker flexing her muscle, exhorting other women to join the World War II effort. I don't know if I got my fingers to work. Did you know, though, through women who entered the workforce during World War II were crucial to the war effort, their pay continued to lag far behind the male counterparts? Female workers rarely earn more than 50% of the male wages. And then there's just a couple other things. VE Day, Victory in Europe Day, generally known as VE Day in Great Britain, or V-dash-E Day, North America, or simply as V-Day, and is a day celebrating the formal acceptance by the Allies of World War II of Nazi Germany's unconditional surrender of its armed forces on May 8th, 1945. And then V-J Day was the victory over Japan, and that is the day of which Imperial Japan surrendered in World War II, in effect bringing the end of the war, and that was August 15th. That day, and while the official US commemoration is September 2nd, but those are the days of August 15th and May 8th. So just a little couple of tidbits. That's it, that's all I have.
Gail?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to stay here, raise your.